I'd like to call the Town Council meeting for September tenth, two thousand and twenty five. Please. Please believe this, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, guys, who've all been seated. Make sure your cell phones are turned off and silenced so we have no disruption. First on the agenda is a public comment. Public comment, of course, is the council meeting for members of the public to opportunity to share with the town council questions, thoughts, comments, concerns, and complaints regarding the town. And interested residents of the town council can in three minutes do so. The town council is sincerely interested in hearing from the public, but the purpose of public comment is for the council to listen to comments, and the council is not required to answer any question provided to lead response to concerns during public comment. The council may take action on items only when duly noticed when they attempt that. Looks like we only have.
Mr. Warburg?
Do you want to use that thing or what?
Yeah, you stand up there. Just your name and address.
I'm looking for.
My only comment really is regarding what we're gonna pay when we run out of money. Because the way I see it, with all the money we're spending, I don't see how we're gonna get to the end of the year. And tax bills don't go out till January, and they're not due in March. If there's one bill I want paid, it's the trash bill. I don't want to find out one day that they're not coming to collect my trash. So please make sure you pay that bill before you pay anything else, please. I would appreciate it. The last thing we need is a stinky town. Stinky town is not a nice place to live. Okay? Furthermore, I don't want any residents deciding they're gonna just start dumping trash at town hall because it's not getting collected. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. None left for the public comments. Next, we move to the approval of minutes. First is August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty five, the actual town council meeting.
Motion to approve, second.
First motion by Ryan, second by Mr. Masti. How do you vote?
Yes.
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 All in favor. Second is the August twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty five, special council meeting. Motion to approve. Motion by Ryan.
Second.
Second by Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mr. Masti had a vote.
I'll refuse because I didn't attend either one because I was off to work. That was the reschedule, so.
I vote yes.
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 Four to one. Masti is the August twenty seventh, twenty twenty two, three. Mr. Ram, motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dan Nelson. A vote. Nelson, Nelson, yes. Mr. Masti, yes. You don't refuse yourself, though. I said yes. It's a random list.
Yep.
Four to one. Next, we'll be agenda police report. Chief? No.
I wasn't here for that meeting. I was working. I think you can remember.
Oh, yeah, you did come to meet in the morning?
No. Well, the twenty fifth was the one I was rescheduled to, to the twenty seventh.
No. No. Well, you were one. You were the twenty fifth.
The Monday?
You refuse yourself to the twenty seventh.
Yes. All right, yeah, the twenty seventh, that was the one I wasn't at. It was work. I believe, yes. Speaking of which, I hate to sidetrack real quick. The special meeting we have, the week of the twenty... I think it's the twenty fourth of September.
It's the seventh, too.
The sev... Is it next week? Good, then I'll be fine then.
Is it the twenty fourth?
It's the tw... I thought it was.
Is it twenty fourth?
I thought it was the twenty fourth.
Seventeen, I don't have a plan for it.
Twenty fourth. I will not be able to attend. I've covered the makeshift work again, so if you want to reschedule, we can. I have no issue with that. I just, I want to give everybody a clear heads up.
We'll discuss that later.
Fair enough.
So next, we move on to the police report. Chief?
Good evening, Mr. Ram, I'm the council. You have my written report. I really have nothing verbal report this month, so I'll keep me as short.
Okay.
If you have any questions in regards to the written report or the financials, I'll answer them.
What's the monitoring business for OHS?
Yeah, so one of the things that had come up, this is a busy month for grants, obviously, with FY twenty six come up. So among one of the things was site monitoring busy conducted by OHS. Where they basically come to ensure that I'm following all their stipulations for all of the programs offered by office of private police.
Okay.
Chief, it's a police issue.
Excuse me?
There's a police issue out here.
Wait, what's the police issue?
Someone needs the police. They've been assaulted.
May I be excused?
Yes, sir.
Absolutely. We'll come back to that, of course, sir.
Always something interesting. We're gonna revert back to the police report. We'll move on to the town manager report. Miss Slater?
Hello, Mayor and Council. You have my written report. I did want to update you on a few things. I did get ahold of the insurance broker, so they're gonna be... They're supposed to be sending the information by tomorrow so that I can add and remove employees. And with the Sussex County grant, once I sent the email to Ms. Green and then it occurred to me that she no longer on council, so then I needed to reach out to Councilman McCarron and spoken with him, and I've spoken with the finance office for Sussex County, and there is no issue with the two thousand dollar allocation to the K nine funds.
Rayan, I have a question. The PPOS settlement.
Yes.
Does anybody on council know what this pertains to? Like, has any background, has deep background history on it?
I've heard it a lot a couple times, but I don't recall very often. Yeah. Let me get back to, I think I've looked into it once or twice because I didn't remember what it was, but I don't recall very often. Can I get back to you?
Well, yeah, I mean, it's.
So there's a class action lawsuit of PPOS, and the city elected to be part of that. So as part of that, we receive settlement money, and it's coming from three M.
That's. So my question is, wouldn't the stipulation on the...
There are none.
There are no stipulations.
No.
Mrs. Todd, this, that's, thank you. Mrs. Todd signed us up for that when she was acting town manager, and that money was free and clear of all stipulations to be used for town expenses, general fund. Like, it was basically the state of Delaware was giving free money to anybody that was willing to sign up for this class action. And I believe that there are three different deposits coming with that. They're shaking their heads. Yes.
So we've already, we've gotten one, and we have a second one on the way, so there will be a third.
And it was supposed to be, was it like a little, I want to say a little bit around short three hundred grand or something like that, maybe?
Eighty would be beautiful.
I honestly don't know what the total is. I don't know what the upcoming deposit is either.
You know?
I know another town's allocation.
Okay, but it does come.
They haven't given any agreements.
But it does come in through deposits.
Correct, okay. Because I was reading, what was confusing to me is when I read that, it said the stipulations were to be used instead, and that it was to be used for attorney fees.
No, there are legal fees taken out of the settlement.
Okay.
Before that money is.
Before that check comes to us, yes.
Nope, that, yep. She had mentioned something about that, and said that it was just a long shot that they, the state reached out to a bunch of different towns, and she said, why not sign up before it was?
Yeah, Mr. Mandalis.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's the one, he's the one who said, hey, this is coming up. You should sign up for it.
Okay. Okay.
Rayan, do you know when the first payment hit, at least? Like, the first settlement amount?
Caroline, either one of you? It was, it was June or July of this year.
Twenty of this year?
This year, yes.
All right. So only one council person knew about this, it seems. There's nobody down. Donnie, you didn't know about it?
No.
Mayor, you didn't know about it? No, Mike, you weren't on?
Now, that being said.
I saw it on television.
Okay.
Mr. Donovan.
I was jumping on the bandwagon because of the water.
Okay.
Janet said she had mentioned it to you, and you said not to worry about it. That was what I was told. But Mr. Mandalis advised her, as one of our attorneys, to go ahead and sign up for it.
It was, I don't know, it was several years ago was when they even started talking about PPOS.
So that's what I'm saying. It's been a while.
Oh, yeah.
But I met, like, she said that you were worried that it would cost the town money, but you, Mandalis, said it's free advice. Go ahead and do it, so she went ahead and did it.
So, you know.
But the money's mine.
It's nice that you know it, and, you know, but.
Yeah, my concern is Mayor and Council did not know this. This is a surprise to, you know, four of us, other than TV, for Mike. You know, that is something that should have been reported to us, especially because it's money that can just be used as the town sees fit.
That's a good amount of money.
So thank you for some background on it.
You're welcome.
One other question. Aflac?
Yes.
You find it useful?
Yes.
Okay. Give me some history as to why. I'm not trying to grow you here. I have my day job. I've had to deal with that flack.
My understanding is the town does not currently offer short-term disability for the employees, so I'm sure that everybody's been in a situation where it's come in handy, and it would be nice for the employees to have it. And I believe that's why Ms. Todd started the process several months ago.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. And they do offer multiple other plans as well.
Okay. That's something that I definitely want shown employees to have good benefits. So if that is a gap, it's definitely something we should all discuss.
Miss Slater, I have, I have a whole plethora of questions, but we're paying them to be here, but you might if I waited till later on.
Absolutely not.
Because I wasn't here for your, like I said, I had to work that night. I had a ton of questions.
Okay.
So just, but we have them here, and I don't want to hold them up because we're paying for that.
I understand.
Okay, so thank you, Miss Slater.
You're welcome.
Old business, we have known. So we pass that. Next is our new business. It's an audit presentation for PKS. Ashley.
I'll stand up here. If this fits my head a little bit better than yours. All right. For those of you I haven't had a chance to meet, I'm Ashley Stern. I'm with PKS and Company. I'm a partner in charge of the audit. And with me, I have Erica Van Besten, who is one of our supervisors in charge of the audit. So in front of you, you have three different packets. First, you have a thicker packet, which is your two thousand and twenty one financial statements. Secondly, you have a thinner packet, which is our required auditors communications relating to the audit. And then you also have a colored copy of what I'm gonna work from today. I'm not gonna make you guys flip through all these pages. We're just gonna go ahead and go from our notes as well. So first, on pages one through three of the financial statements, which again is that thicker packet, you will find our report on the financial statements within. If you remember back to what we were hearing in June this past year with the two thousand and twenty audit, there were some issues with the billing system for two thousand and twenty and not being able to access it. Because of that, we've actually had to look at two thousand and twenty one under a different set of, set of eyes as well. Because if something wasn't recorded correctly for two thousand and twenty, we have to look at it again for two thousand and twenty one. Because of that, we've issued a qualified opinion just related specifically to that billing system from two thousand and twenty. This is the last year that you should see any of the issues related to the billing system switch, which was done in two thousand and twenty one. So from here on out, you should be good. On pages fifty through fifty one of the financial statements, you'll find our report on internal controls over financial reporting and compliance. This would be if we noted any major non-compliance issues, any fraud within our testing, or any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in our internal controls. This is where you would see that be reported. We did identify some significant deficiencies and material weaknesses in the town's internal controls that I'll go ahead and go over. So to give a little background on what those terms are, a material weakness in an internal control is a weakness in some, in your processes, in your checks and balances within the processes of the town that could result in a material or a, which is a calculation in the audit or auditing terms of financial statements that are misstated, that they would not be correct. So if you're receiving monthly reports and there's a breakdown in your internal controls or checks and balances, those monthly reports would not be correct. A significant deficiency in internal controls is not, does not rise to a level of being material in dollar value, but it is a weakness in internal controls that could cause issues for the town with their financial reporting. There's a few things that we've noted, and they're all actually repeats from two thousand and twenty. So we realized that we were just here, you know, two and a half months ago, and there was no time to be able to fix all this for two thousand and twenty one. So I'm not gonna bore you and go through each of those, but we did notice all the same things in two thousand and twenty one that we were noticing in two thousand and twenty. Mainly, just to give a few, are the timeliness of the bank reconciliations. Again, those were not completed until two thousand and twenty four, as those were finished, so timeliness of that checks and balances. Journal entries, preparation, review, and posting by management. There just needs to be a process. And when you have a small town, it's tough, but you need, but there needs to be a process developed to have somebody who writes the journal entry and then somebody different who reviews and posts it. It allows there not to be any edits or adjustments to financial records without that check and balance. And then lastly, just to summarize one, are your receivable reconciliations. Throughout the year, the town does not, in twenty one, did not know what was due to the town at any point. There was no reconciling items to know exactly what the town was due, whether it be taxes or back then any water sewer postings. Significant deficiencies, again, these are, are not as severe as material weaknesses. We noticed that there was some invoice documentation that was missing. I understand that this was a while ago and that something might have been thrown away or mistakenly misplaced, but it is something that we're noting, so we want you guys to be aware of that, as well as there has not been a timely, monthly, or annual close process for the town. Taking a look at some financial numbers in relation from two thousand and twenty one to two thousand and twenty, total assets for the town in two thousand and twenty one were just north of seven point two million dollars. That can be broken down between your business type and your governmental activities. Whereas on the, on the other side, our liabilities were just north of a million dollars at the end of two thousand and twenty one. That's actually an increase in our assets of about five hundred thousand dollars from two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty one. Overall, our net position, or what can be termed as the health of the town as of December thirty first, two thousand and twenty one, was five point nine million dollars. Nine hundred and forty-six thousand of that being completely unrestricted, meaning to be used for any operations of the town. Our statement of revenues, expenses, and change in net position, or really the town's income statement, is on your next page. Couple keynotes. Our total revenues for the year were one point five million dollars. That has increased from two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty one. I know this was a while ago, but back in two thousand and twenty one, there was actually a significant amount of realty transfer taxes that we did not have in two thousand and twenty. It was a pretty good real estate market back then, so you did see the effects of that in two thousand and twenty one. Also, we actually saw the decrease in our expenses from two thousand and twenty one, from two thousand and twenty. We had one point three million dollars in expenses compared to one point four in two thousand and twenty. Again, resulting in a positive cash flow or a positive increase in our net position or health of the town in two thousand and twenty one. When we take a look at the expenditures of the town, to have a breakdown of where does that money go. The largest part of town expenditures, or forty-eight percent, goes to public state, or went to public safety in two thousand and twenty one, followed second by a thirty-one percent of the town's expenditures into your town operations or your general government of the town. I know you spend a lot of time focusing on the general fund and working through your budget each year, so I wanted to kind of give you some details about that. On pages forty-six through forty-eight of the financial statements, we do show a budgetary comparison schedule. So we show what the budget was compared to what actually happened, and then any positive or negative variances. Then the actual amounts were actually favorable to the budget in two thousand and twenty one by five hundred and six thousand dollars. And this is a combination of two things. First, revenues had a few areas that were under budget, but also had quite a few areas that were over budget because of the realty transfer taxes, so you might have estimated the budget to be a little bit lower just because you weren't sure what was happening at that time. On the expense side, there was quite significant savings specifically in capital projects due to timing. So capital projects that were budgeted to happen in two thousand and twenty one, it actually didn't happen until two thousand and twenty two. So there were certain things from that perspective. The unassigned fund balance is fifty-two percent of the total fund balance of the town, or six hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Just to give you a reference point, the GFOA, or kind of the overall governing of our finance officers for town, cities, and counties, recommends that at minimum, the general fund have at least no less than two months of operating expenditures in your unassigned fund balance. For reference, the town at the end of twenty one had about ten months of your operating expenditures in your unassigned fund balance. One of the biggest pieces of the town's financial statements is actually the pension related to town employees. This has been a big change for a lot of towns and cities back in the two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty one because there is a required funding of that contribution annually. The remainder of the pension is actually held at the state of Delaware and completely controlled through that plan, so you just have a piece of it that is yours. So there, at no point can you say, oh, we owe this money. Let's go write a check, and then it's completely paid off. That's just not part of the plan. You're, you have a required contribution that the town has to fund annually, and that's the portion that must be funded. If it's not funded, then the town can be in jeopardy of their pension benefits. I'm happy to state that the town has consistently fully funded the required contribution for that retirement plan, and the total liability related to the retirement plan as of December thirty first, two thousand and twenty one was twenty-six thousand. So the last piece of our, our auditors communications is that second little packet or the smaller packet. And it includes certain letters from us. First, there's a best practices recommendation letter, or also known as our management letter. So this is where we see things that could be best practices that we see in other towns. It could be ways to strengthen your internal controls or strengthen your processes and procedures, or just kind of in comparison to what others are doing similar size, might be good ideas for you. So we have a few here, and of course, I'm an auditor. I love suggestions, so I wanted to kind of go through all of these. First, we noted some differences in your procurement policies and your conflict of interest statements during our testing. We noticed that there was one vendor that actually was considered a related party for the town that was paid to do a service for the town back in two thousand and twenty one, and there was no documentation of any conflicts of interest that was noted. Now, the procurement process was followed. It was bid out, and that one was selected. But there should be notes as required with the uniform guidance to have conflict of interest documented within the town. So we recommend that the town put in a conflict of interest policy. In the event you start to receive a lot of federal money, it's really important to have those types of conflicts of interest documented. Also, a very specific procurement policy or purchasing policy should be put in place for events like this. We live in a small town. There are going to be, you know, people who own businesses that may be related, or friends, or neighbors, or something. So we should have some really specific policies related to any issues that might arise in the future. The pension payments, we mentioned that pension just a minute ago. We had some differences in the documentation of the pension payments. Not that there were any issues, but this really should be documented, the split between what's the employee and employer, or so. So we are noting that those, that kind of needs to be tidied up. Funds tracking, there is not a great tracking mechanism for the town as of December thirty first, two thousand and twenty one, for different funds that the town receives, like police grants or any other grants that may have restrictions around the spending. A lot of towns use a very specific tracking to know that, hey, we received twenty-five thousand dollars from Sussex County, and this is exactly how we spent it. Back in two thousand and twenty one, there was not a great tracking process for that. Journal entry procedures, these are where there have been journal entries posted to town records that were missing some backup documentation. It's not that they were improper journal entries, but their documentation was kept. And the rest are actually repeats from two thousand and twenty. So again, I know that you didn't have time between us finishing the two thousand and twenty audit and us doing the two thousand and twenty one audit real quick to kind of clean these up, so they, they're repeats from what we had, mentioned in two thousand and twenty. Does any, I know I've spread a lot of information out here. What questions can I answer?
When will we see the ARPA come into play? I mean, that was revenue that we got, almost several hundred thousands of dollars. Would that make, make things look better when in actuality they wouldn't be if ARPA hadn't been there?
So I believe your first ARPA deposit you're gonna see is in two thousand and twenty two. Yeah, I believe the first ARPA deposit is in two thousand and twenty two.
I think it was in twenty one, and then the final one was in twenty two. A little bit, I think, of it was spent in twenty one, and I have documentation, I think, of the rest of the spending. It just took place after that, twenty one.
Yeah, the, the ARPA was split into a few payments, so. Twenty twenty, right? Was a long time ago, so I'm trying to remember exactly which deposit you got first. But you did get a piece of it, and then the rest of it's in twenty twenty two, so it could make the records look a little bit better than what they should.
Could have deleted, right?
Correct, correct.
Ashley?
Yeah?
Just the, were the PKS asked for the COI information, correct?
Related to the.
The work that was done by a relative.
Correct.
And so it was asked by the auditor, but it's not provided.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
We do have a email documentation where an attorney was consulted, but we don't have any documentation on what that attorney said or any opinion from an attorney, just stating that an attorney was consulted.
Okay.
I have another question. You did two thousand and twenty.
Mm-hmm.
For four hundred hours. I think it was four hundred and three hours, am I right or wrong?
I don't remember.
I think it was, but this one here seemed to be quicker. What was the difference?
So as soon as we finished the two thousand and twenty audit, we jumped right into the two thousand and twenty one audit, made requests, we received the last piece of our audit request, we had to request documentation, testing, et cetera, in July. And we told you guys we would be as quick as we possibly can, and we pulled staff off of other jobs to wrap this up as soon as possible. The whole, you know, just to reference this, and I, I don't want to belabor the two thousand and twenty audit, but the big holdup on the two thousand and twenty audit was us getting information to be able to complete the audit. But this, we got it in July, and we wrapped it up, and were able to come to this meeting. We met in, I believe it was last week with Ms. Slater and the mayor to go over the draft and wrap everything up as soon as we could.
And as you stated, we're allowed that because the information we're already receiving from the two thousand and twenty audit.
Correct.
And our books were reconciled, so it made it, because as you were doing the two thousand and twenty audit, you were also obviously reconciled. You were all, you were reconciled in two thousand and twenty one.
Correct.
So it made it a lot quicker, and you hear that.
It does make it quicker when we know that the balances that we're starting with are correct. So when we looked at two thousand and nineteen, we had to do some adjustments and kind of.
And that was reconciled up to, to my understanding, two thousand and twenty two's kind of there, but after two thousand and twenty three, it was back to.
That is my understanding, is that most of two thousand and twenty two is ready to go. I'm gonna knock on wood.
Right.
And that two thousand and twenty three.
It's a new start.
Is still being worked on. Again, I may have looked at twenty two or twenty three, but just the, that's just my understanding.
I'll hold it to you. Let's ask some questions.
Any other questions? Well, I can.
I'll Google them answers.
What's a monthly financial close process?
So with, with each financial process, you should have a process within the town to be able to produce accurate financial records at the end of each month. So if you were to ask, you know, this town meeting, hey, can we see an accurate income statement and balance sheet as of August thirty first, if that's the end of last month, let us know what happened this past month. You know, what kind of, what, what inflows do we have? What outflows do we have? So there should be a process to know that that is accurate. So there should be bank reconciliations that are done shortly at the end of the month, which is where you look at the activity that happened on the bank and make sure that it is all recorded within your financial records as well. You know, the old little check registers that people have to with their checkbooks, similar, but it's in an accounting software. You should have a process for reconciling accounts payable, so amount that the town owes to other vendors, whether it be electric bills, whether it's hard work, but it could be anything. You should have a process for reconciling the amounts that are due to the town. So if real estate taxes are still due from customer or from townspeople, you should know exactly what has been received and what hasn't been received and that you can match that up to what just happened in the financial records. No, not no question at all. There is no dumb accounting questions.
So when you previously visited, you gave us a suggestion of bringing on somebody to help with the reconciliations, help with the, because it's a small town, short staff.
Yeah.
Do you still stand by those recommendations now that you've got this done? Like, is this something you foresee is the problem that will help? Or this would be a solution to the problems we have? Because that seemed to me that we only have two people working in the office and they are spread thin to an extent. So a little bit of help here and there, would that go a long way again? Put it on the record, you know what I mean?
Well, it's also maybe more about recording what's being done as the whoever's in charge of the chief financial position is also in charge of recording what is being, been done, what they're doing into the books, which also helps out the reconciliation.
It does.
Because if you cannot find documentation on something that's been done, then you're searching for random numbers hoping that they match up.
Right.
And you had also recommended that the other person is like for that specific situation, like a check and balance system, that way people don't forget.
I really like the practice of having a third party come in and be a good check and balance with a small town. So like you said, you have two people. And in that case, what happens if one is out for an extended period of time, a sickness, if something happens? Then you only have one person using all of the town funds. You, in my industry, and I'm not saying this is happening, that that leads to the potential for theft, misappropriation and the potential just for errors. When you're doing that much, there is, there's a likelihood that an error, a human error is going to occur. So having somebody, a third party come in and be a good check and balance to do some of the monthly reconciliations or review over them to make sure that, do that monthly close process that we were just talking about. Sometimes they, you know, other towns utilize council members, I'm not saying you guys need to do this. Some towns, some towns utilize a third party and they have somebody come in. And then towns that are much larger and that might have ten or twelve people in the town and four of them are finance staff, they don't need something like this because they have the team members to be able to do that. But when you have team members that are wearing so many different hats, it is good to have somebody who's main focus is finance and come in and be able to help with, with those types of internal controls and checks and balances.
And for your final statement for twenty twenty, you recommended a monthly coordinator, is pretty much what you're speaking about.
Correct. And it could, it could get to quarterly or it could get to, you know, maybe you start with somebody coming in monthly and as, you know, operational efficiencies are realized and everything kind of gets streamlined, maybe then you decide you only need someone quarterly, but that's completely up to you.
Thank you, Ashley.
Absolutely, guys, thank you so much. And if you guys have questions, honestly, feel free to email me or call me, I love answering accounting questions.
Now you can go home. She's out. She's out here quick. Have a good day, guys.
Bye, guys, have a good night.
Yes, you too. So this actually right in, now the audit presentation is done. I'd like to discuss, the next one is the discussion of reconciling QuickBooks and a possibly monthly coordinator. What, I want to, I want to make it known that I did some research with our books and what, what QuickBooks says and what our bank account says. Our QuickBooks has a difference in just what I can find of four hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars more than what is actually in the bank. It's very different. And this all goes back to what Ashley was just speaking of, a monthly coordinator. Somebody to figure out where our books are actually standing. Because we have, as we have been given, monthly financial reports that are showing numbers that are still extremely inaccurate. There's not much we can do to make a good decision off of it. The only way we can do is make a good decision off of real numbers. And if we're, we can't do it off the numbers that were shown right now in our QuickBooks account.
So when was the last time those numbers were reconciled?
I don't know if they ever been reconciled. That's, that's Ashley's state.
I can speak to that if that's okay. The few accounts that I have had the chance to really delve into, twenty twenty-three, they have not been reconciled since twenty twenty-three.
And that's, that's deposits and all that kind of stuff?
Yes.
And that's what Ashley was saying earlier, because they had to do all of those. They, because when they were doing a twenty twenty audit, they reconciled pretty much our books up to twenty twenty-two. And after that, they said it was up to the town to do it, which was maybe the middle beginning of the twenty twenty audit, but it's still not there. So the main, obviously, problem is, especially considering our budget, figuring out the taxes, is we need to know where our money stands. Because if we're given financial information that's not true and involved by that much money, we can't make a credible decision. So.
Ms. Carolyn, who, you deposit all the cash deposits and all that stuff, who does, who puts that in QuickBooks?
I do water bills and I do the deposits for the.
Well, you handle pretty much all the cash deposits, right? Like, the water bill comes in, any checks we get come in, anything like that?
I do, I do quickly, very fast, yes.
Okay.
But you don't put it in QuickBooks?
No, I do not.
Okay.
Yeah, I talked, Ms. Todd is one that, you know, you need to be quick with that time.
Yes.
So with that being said, I had reached out to our Steve from Dooling Bank about possibly getting a monthly coordinator. Who's Steve? Steve is a, he's a manager at Dooling Bank. He's the one in charge of our bank account, so I'll talk about that. He had preferred Mr. George Love, who I've asked to come here tonight, as somebody, as a forensic accountant, to come in and look at our, our books and tell us where we're at. And I asked him to come here to speak about what you could actually offer for us as a town.
Let me first give you my phone, so you can get a better idea of who I am. We'll chat a little bit. Thank you. Okay, first of all, let me tell you, I'm very familiar with town shake. I grew up in a little place, a little north of here called Harrington. I'm a good old Harrington boy, married a Harrington girl, had three boys, have seven grandchildren now, so I've been around. Been a C P A for over forty years. But if you look on my card, in addition to be a C P A, which is a certified public accountant, I'm also a C P A, which means I evaluate businesses for estates as well as for litigation in court. I hold two distinctions in forensic accounting. I am a master analyst of financial forensics and I am a certified financial forensics. And I'm also a C F E, a certified fraud examiner. Okay, so I always get the question, George, what do you need all the initials for? They're mostly for court, to be perfectly honest with you, because on a cross-examination, I could say, yeah, I know something about this or I know something about that. What you guys have right now in front of you, just in my little period of time sitting here, is not uncommon. You have to be careful. Has anybody ever heard of Rita Cromwell? Rita Cromwell was the comptroller for the town of Dixon. Rita Cromwell, over, I think it was a nineteen-year period, stole fifty-three million dollars. Small town, small town, but things didn't get tied out, things didn't get reconciled. So our firm a long time ago recognized this problem, that a lot of small townships, you know, they got great people that have great intentions and they got great staff, they're good people, but they can only go so far. You know, they have limitations because it's two people trying to do a whole bunch of work. So what our firm started doing is we actually do the monthly reconciliations. We'll come in and we'll help you with your internal controls to make sure you have checks and balances. We'll make sure that your cash recs every month, and in the beginning, I recommend every month. We'll get to a quarterly basis. I have one client, our firms are, by the way, our firm's been around about thirty-eight years now. We've been around a long time. One of my clients that before I started my own firm, one of my clients I've done for over forty years and they're a municipality. And when I started with them, it was just like some of the issues you guys have. So we now got to a point where they don't have any issues. And we work with the audit firm. We don't, it's not like, I'm not replacing your auditor, don't look at me like that, because I don't. But what I do is, look for any. When Ashley was talking about like, who does what and, you know, segregation of duties and stuff like that, those are the things that we work with them on and we say, hey, look, what do you say as the auditor? We try to accomplish those. I want those things to go away. I don't like those things. And the reason I don't like those things, because when they show up in your financials, it can hurt you with banking and everything else. So we want to get rid of the auditor's comments. The only way to do that is correct it. So that's what we do. We work very hand in hand with, with the audit firm. They have to be independent. So you may say, well, why didn't the auditor take and do those reconciliations and stuff like that? Well, they just do it. It's called independence. They must be independent. They cannot make these financial statements their own, because if they do that, it holds no credibility. I don't have to be that way. I don't have to have the independence. I can come in and say, okay, we're going to reconcile the cash, payroll, everything. And we may give you a ton of suggestions. So it eliminates that part of it and it makes it so that we can do a lot more for you than, and it's not that they're not capable. My God, we're very capable young ladies to do that. It's just that they have very hard lines that they can't cross. So that's basically our biggest stitch. Last night, I was at a, one of our municipalities and we were going over their budget. Like I said, this is the municipality I've done for forty years. We actually track their historical cost. I have probably about twenty-eight years. I can tell you what it's going to cost to turn the lights on in the office. I know that much from the tracking of it. And I use this, I use a little technique that we use in business evaluation, it's called common sizing. So when I put like the historical numbers all in a column for all the years, over here, it's calculating it by percentage. I can take a ruler and go right down that line and I can tell you, hey, office expense, six percent, five percent, four percent, fourteen percent. Okay, let's look for something wrong there. And that's when you go dig that out. It's better for me to find it and we fix it than it is the auditors. Because then the auditors have got to say, hey, they got problems. There was some kind of check and balance missing. So we get involved in your budget, we get involved in your internal control. Does everybody understand internal controls? Okay, because with internal controls, you know, somebody, somebody told me one time, because I am a fraud examiner, and they said, well, if we have great internal controls, no one can ever steal from us. That's not true.
Yeah.
That's not true at all. What, what, if you have great internal controls, you know what that means? We catch them fast. That's what it means. Doesn't mean somebody can't steal, they just get to catch them a lot faster. What you don't want is to have a Rita Cromwell, which over nineteen years steals fifty-three million dollars from you. So we work very hard on your internal controls to make sure that that's okay. Okay? We get into a lot of different areas, like accounts receivable, how fast are you turning money? We look at cash flows, how, how much money's coming in? You guys are in, please don't take this the wrong way, you're in a terrible position right now. Because I just, I just listened to you guys discuss about, we're not sure where our reconciliations are. You can't run, I don't care if it's a town or if it's a hardware store or if it's a, a repair shop. You can't run it without the numbers. And those numbers have got to come frequently. They've got to come on a monthly basis. There couldn't, couldn't time where we do, we'll only do it quarterly after a few years. Like the one I did the buzz for last night, we do them quarterly. You used to do them every month. Now, in the beginning, it was like every two weeks, it felt like. So we got to go through all that. Is it painstaking? Yes. Because you're starting from scratch as far as developing stuff. We're going to take all their suggestions and we're going to start implementing them for you. If you're lucky and I don't know if any of you guys have a background in accounting, if you don't, that's fine. But it makes it a little bit tougher for you to uphold your fiduciary duty without the support staff that you need. What happens a lot of times is that you volunteer, you become on council, but you got to remember, you have a fiduciary duty. The buck stops here. That's where it stops. So you got to make sure this town's running like a low-end machine. And it doesn't mean that where you're at now is a terrible, it's not a good position, but it's not a terrible position because you're willing to make changes, you're willing to go forward. If you just rubber stamp what's happened for the last five or six years, not a good idea. You need to make changes. You need to get it so that when somebody comes in here from the town and they say, well, but the gentleman about trash. We got that. We can figure that, we can answer that class of questions, you know, about like, where's the money coming from, how it's being paid? We'll be able to answer that question and it'll be with your help. Because we rely on you guys an awful lot. And you're going to say, well, wait a minute, George, I got eighty hours worth of work already, how in the world am I going to have more? We have staff that comes in and helps you and tries to get, get as much as we can. Most things are, like you use QuickBooks right now. Jessica, who runs our book, a lot of our bookkeeping, she's an accountant, she's also a QuickBooks expert, so she knows QuickBooks. She'll tell you how to do stuff, she tells me how to do stuff, but I don't, I'm like, how the hell does she do that? You know, she's very intelligent when it comes to that stuff. We're going to try to streamline your life. Right now, it may be streamlined, I have no idea, but I'm going to guess no. I'm going to guess that we're going to be able to come in and say, hey, have you ever tried to do it this way? Had a client one time in a municipality, their operating account, they ran a lot of checks through. And when we first got them, they'd wait till the end of the month, they'd get their statement, they go, got that, that, got that. By the time they were done and then it didn't work, and they're all like, oh my God, I'm off, what do I do? We said, we're not doing that. We're going to reconcile your books every week, every day in the beginning. Because you can go online and get that statement from the bank and reconcile. You can go right along. I start my day, I, because I, I found with the firm, I start my day at five o'clock every morning. And at five o'clock, I start reconciling all of Love and Associates and any other companies we're affiliated with. I reconcile every credit card. By six o'clock, when all the banks flip their cash letters, I can reconcile my bank statements. I don't know how many credit cards, do you use credit cards? Okay, credit cards are great and they're the worst evil there is. Because a notorious thing is fire companies. Fire companies, we do a lot of fire companies, we really put the, the, the constraints on, on credit cards. They're not reconciled every month sometimes. Sometimes it's at the end of the month you want to, they reconcile. No, that doesn't work. It doesn't, because if I have a credit card and you say, George, we need some supplies, we need some, some paper towels, da-da-da-da-da-da. Can you go to Sam's? Sure, I'll go to Sam's. In addition to that, I bought a little home supplies for George in addition to what I bought for you. And you'll never know that. You will never. And you'll never know that. You will never know that. It's funny, because some people ask me, uh, the question of, uh, you know, how do you know when, when fraud is going on? Well, I said, I studied for five months, and then I went to DC, and I had a lot of years of experience, and they teach me how to steal. I know how to steal. I know how to launder money. Well, why? How else are you gonna catch them? If you don't know how they're doing it, you've gotta know how to catch them. I have had so many background checks on me, it's ridiculous because of what I've had to learn. I was also on the gaming commission for ten years for the state of Delaware. So there's a background wise, I'm pretty solid. That's kinda my stitch. So what I think you guys should do, I think you need somebody like our firm to come in and fix this and keep it going. It's not so much to fix it for you five gentlemen. It's to fix it for the future, for the next five gentlemen, and the next five gentlemen. You know, I see it all the time, if you're looking volunteer like fire companies, the worst position to fill is treasury. Everybody says, I'll be the treasurer, because all you do is write checks and you make deposits. Well, that's not true. Not even close. And when they figure out what you gotta do, then they're like, I don't wanna be treasurer anymore. We do the same thing for a lot of fire companies that I'm telling you that we would like to do for you guys. And we make it so that treasurer's job is really easy. So now they got people that wanna stay in treasury for eight, nine years. We're gonna try to make your life easier, because if I can make your life easier, that's gonna be easier for these guys. That's the way it works. You're gonna have answers, you're gonna have enough. Is it gonna happen overnight? No. It's just not. Is it gonna take time? Yes. Are you gonna wanna throw something at me at some point? Yes. In fact, that's gonna happen. But you gotta get it done. You can't keep running the way you're running. You're a locomotive ready to be rammed. We can't talk about twenty-one expenses. I mean, you care about all the money, where it went, all that stuff. Aren't we a little bit more concerned about September of twenty twenty-five? Where's our money at? Can we pay the trash? Can, where's our, where's our, and we'll talk of things about like, um, your property taxes and other revenues. Have you got them coming in at the right stream? There's a little concept called time value of money that we'll talk a lot about. Time value of money is how fast can we get our money? Because what I wanna do is, I mean, wanna put it into a, I don't know if you have this, you may have this already. I'm gonna put it in sweep accounts. So what I'm doing is I'm depositing a lot of money in this account. And what the bank will do is sweep it over to this account that's earning all this interest. So we'll keep little here, lot here, make good interest on our money, which is time value of money. And I'm not talking about once a month, I'm talking about daily, I'm talking about hourly. I wanna make as much money as we can. And then when they say, oh, the electric bill came in, we're gonna grab enough to pay the electric bill, put it back into the operator, and we pay it. But we maximize the use of our money as best we can. That's what it's all about right there. But you, as a board, you have got to have transparency. I mean, no offense, but somebody could come in here with some good accounting knowledge and each alive. They just could. And that's not where you wanna be. Is it your fault? No, no, no. It's probably been handed down. I mean, we're going back to twenty-one, you just got to twenty-one all the time. We need to get you caught up on twenty-two. The other thing we try to do is, I don't even, I haven't even seen what your auditors charge. I, I've worked with, not these two billion ladies, but I've worked with that firm before. They gotta do a lot of work to get it to an auditable standpoint, and they're constantly fighting how many journal entries they make. And they make too many journal entries, they cross over the line of independence. So they fight to not make too many journal entries. So our goal is to have, we'll hand them a set of work papers and say, here, here it is. Everything's tied up, there's all the backup. We make their life easier. If I make their life easier, what happens? Your returns and your finances get done quicker.
Speaking of journal entries, I think they did tell me they had fifty-eight journal entries in twenty twenty.
And that's flirting. I'm telling you right now, as somebody who has spent my time in court with litigation, being a forensic accountant and all that, you're flirting with that stuff. You're flirting with, you know, how many journal entries can you really have, uh, before, oh my God. Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, so that's in essence what we do. We do it for a lot of fire companies, we do a lot for a lot of nonprofits, we do it for municipalities. I'll just tell you right now, it's painful. We go through a lot, we're gonna drive those two young ladies crazy, and they're gonna come into the meetings and complain. We gotta get rid of those people. They're driving me nuts because I can't get my own work done. But it's gotta get done. It's gotta get done. There comes a point where you just have to stop the ball. And right now, I think you're at that point. You gotta stop the ball, you gotta get twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four done. And we need to see where you are in twenty-five. You, you just can't keep running the way you're running right now, in my opinion. That's just my opinion. Anybody have any questions for me?
Well, uh, yeah, you just said, uh, very plainly the same thing we all know. We're, uh, financially hurting, so what's the cost of this because taxpayers need to know where their money's going? Is it hourly? Is it a year? Like, how do you build?
We build on the hour.
Okay, what's your hourly rate?
Uh, it varies depending on the staff member. It could be as low as eighty-five bucks an hour to a hundred and fifty to two hundred dollars an hour. You don't want me reconciling your cash, but I'm a little bit more than that. You don't wanna deal with that. And I wouldn't do that anyway. We got, we, we got plenty of junior and senior accountants that can do that.
And what's the average amount of hours they put in a week when you start working with a town or a fire company or whatever?
That's just very diff, well, it depends on, it depends on how long we've done that fire company or how long we've done that municipality.
Fresh start.
Sometimes they go really, really quick.
Brand new.
Um, without looking, I, I hate to do that to you, because without looking at your books and seeing where you are.
Right.
I'm gonna tell you the wrong number no matter which way it is.
I was just looking for kind of like a rough estimate, you know what I mean? Like thirty, forty hours a week, you know, like a full-time.
No, no, anything like that. It'll be more in the thirty hours, twenty-five hours a week, somewhere in that ballpark.
That's fair. No, that's fair. We're just rough estimates.
Just a rough ballpark. Okay. In the, I'm not gonna lie to you, in the beginning, you're gonna spend a heck of a lot more money on me than you will once we get it caught up. Once we get it caught up, it becomes easier, because our people don't have to come in here twenty-five hours a week. They have to come in here four hours. We'll do the reconciliations, we'll look at everything, and we'll say, okay, that looks good. We will take your QuickBooks and take the auditor's report and make it look like that. Why is that a big deal? Because that's gonna, that you're gonna give them, and then they're used to looking at it. And when it comes auditor time, it's easier for them to track. We save you a little bit of money.
Yeah, well, that's good you said that, because the first one, the twenty twenty, they've gone into about, they spent about four hundred hours.
Oh, okay.
Because they couldn't figure out the books, and we were paying them way more than eighty-five or a hundred dollars an hour.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry.
All of that time we were putting in just to get our books right to even do the twenty twenty audit.
Because one of the problems they've got is, if they audit twenty twenty, they've gotta first take and figure out twenty nineteen. Because they need to know that the opening balances for twenty twenty are right. That's the first thing they've gotta do. I don't, I, I have no idea. I have no clue. Once we roll our sleeves up and get into it, we can start saying, okay, this is where we are. And, you know, we'll actually look at you guys and say, okay, what can they handle? Where are they at? You know, in the accounting world, in the bookkeeping world. We need to make that assessment. And we may, Jessica may assign a person to say, okay, help them with cash recs, so they can understand it better. What the auditors did tonight was really good. We do it a little different. So in your first few months, what we're doing in every month, you are going to see me. And I'm gonna come in and I'm gonna give, they're gonna give you the, the, the reports that are printed off of your QuickBooks. And we're gonna go through it, and I'm gonna make sure that each one of you understand it. If you don't ask questions, shame on you. I need to make sure you guys understand this. Why? A financial statement is only as good a tool if you understand how to use it. You know, if you're a mechanic and you don't get how ratchet wrenches work, you're in a lot of trouble. So I need to make sure that you guys understand what these numbers are saying. And I will spend all the time I need, and you'll have my personal cell phone, you can call me and say, George, I don't get this. I'll, I'll be glad to stop and explain to you. It's that important, because the residents are gonna look at you guys.
Rhian, do you know how much we have in our realty transfer tax fund that's standing by chance?
Not off the top of my head, no.
Okay.
From the bank account? Um, from our bank account, that's four hundred and forty-two thousand dollars.
Can you verify? I'm pretty sure we can pull from that to make payments. You're just not supposed to set your budget on it, but if you can, okay, I'm, I thought so, so.
I mean, it's, you gotta throw a band-aid, throw a band-aid right now, so you can get through it, but you can't.
I'm just saying, there's, just verifying there should be money in that account. You just can't, you're not supposed to set your budget on it, because there's not much is coming in, kind of thing.
And you're lucky that it's not the other one.
Right.
Right.
That could be a real problem.
Right.
It still could be a problem. We just don't know at this point. And that doesn't, I'm not making a statement that somebody may be misappropriating funds. But I'm gonna tell you something right now. Your organization, the way it is right now, you wouldn't wanna get somebody like me, who was on the wrong side of the law, to come in and do your books. I could rob you blind, you'd be bankrupt before you even knew what happened to you. Because they know how to hide it. I, I picked up a, I picked up a woman one time in Excel, what she was stealing was, she was, they get NFS checks every so often. People would come in and say, okay, here's the cash for this. She pocketed the cash, keep the NFS check on the list. It would always, it would, it tied right up to the general ledger, because she wasn't taking the checks off. But, but you look at it, and you start to say, wait a minute, that doesn't look like it adds up. She, what she was doing with Excel is sliding the lines together and hiding those checks that she was stealing the money. I think it was like thirty-five thousand dollars later. You know, it happens real quick. You don't, okay, in the world of fraud, there's a fraud triangle. At the top point, it's where you've got a situation. Uh, you've got a drug problem, you've got an alcohol problem, you've got some kind of issue that you need money, you've got, just up to your eyeballs in debt. The next point is the opportunity. I have an opportunity to be able to solve this. The last point is rationalization. I'm gonna tell you why it was okay for me to do this. You know, I'm gonna tell you why it was okay, even though it wasn't okay. When I, I speak, I'm, I'm also a technical speaker. I speak on ethics, fraud, and nonprofits. I speak at high schools and I speak at colleges to accounting students. And I have this little game I play at the end, and I hold up twenty-two pictures. You gotta tell me as a fraudster, because this is, this person looks like a fraudster. They always get one wrong. It's this crusty old guy, and they all say, he's a fraudster. He's a federal judge. The point to the exercise is, fraud doesn't come with a gun and a mask and a slimy person. Fraud, real quick case, I'll tell you a real quick case, and I promise I won't deliver. Um, had a call on, on a taxi the other night, about ten o'clock. And they said, is this George Locke? I said, yeah, it's George Locke. He said, I understand you do fraud. I said, well, I don't do fraud, but I, I detect it and try to prevent it, is what I do. He says, well, I got a big problem, and he, and he says, I need you to come look. And I said, that's fine. I said, I'll see you tomorrow morning at five AM. He says, five AM? What the hell are you talking about, George? And I'm like, yeah, five AM. I wanna be in there before anybody gets there. Got in there, he was missing about a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. And spent a little, once the, I looked at everything, I looked where we were. When the bookkeeper came in, I sat with her, chatted with her for forty-five minutes, went back to his office and says, she stole the money. And he says, you're nuts. There's no way. She's a soccer mom. She sits two rows in front of me in church. Her husband's a pillar. And I said, I don't care about all of that. She stole the money. And he's like, there's no way, George, you missed it. So I said, all right, tell you what, let's bring her in. She fessed up. Well, how did I pick it up so quick? Was, when I went right straight to payroll, something she could control real easy. So her check was supposed to be five hundred dollars a week. She was recording in QuickBooks five hundred dollars a week, but she was taking a thousand. So she'd take the check for a thousand, change it to five hundred, and it was plain as day. How this guy was having a problem is like most entrepreneurs, they do really, really well, and they get to the point where they can't handle the books, you know, because they're worried about the business. So they turn it over to somebody, and that person reps them off. So this guy was doing really well, two million dollars a year, but he had never had money, and that was the reason she was stealing it. It happens all the time. It happens all the time. If I was you guys, I would hug somebody like me and say, please bring him in. It's like, because I, I'll tell you the reason why. It's like with treasury, sometimes treasurers are like, hmm, no, I, what are you saying? Doing something wrong? No, no, we're trying to actually work for your team and saying, hey, let's look at it, and we can tell the board. It's all good. It's all good. So, we got some back years to do, so we don't know where we are in, in, in that role, but we'll, we'll look.
I started, to someone, I wanted to say thank you, Mr. Locke, first off. Um, but I wanna say to my fellow council members and mayor, if we do this, the one thing that is my recommendation that we are gonna have to focus on, that we have a budget coming for November, we're gonna have to pass something for twenty twenty-five, which can be amended. We need to be very, very careful not to throw a bunch of things on our agendas and bog down the existing staff we have. Like this, when you get into something like this, it's triage. If you've got a body, you know they're shot, you stop the bleed, and that is the focus. Like, there's a lot of things that have to go on hold. You're trying to throw a bunch of stuff on, that's how you get more collapse. So my opinion, it doesn't have to be listened to, but brand a unit for the state that went through a similar issue. And when you do hit this, you have to do that if you want success.
Let's talk about budgets, because that's one I didn't really get into too much. Uh, we do a budget because our bylaw said we should do a budget, and we're all pretty, and it balances, and then we stick it in a drawer and say, man, you could have budgeted. We're good. That's not what you do with a budget.
Oh, we can speak to that. Don't worry, Mr. Locke. Me and Donnie and Mike, remember how much we used to argue about budget? It's old school people on here.
That's good.
We don't want it in the drawer.
I love it, old school. But we gotta look at the budget every month, in the beginning, every month, maybe then every quarter. How's our line items doing? It's gonna be built right into your QuickBooks. So that when these guys get the report, they're gonna look across there and they're gonna say, office expense, seven thousand dollars. We budgeted fifteen, we look like we're okay. Or office expense fifteen, we budgeted seven, what the hell's going on? We, we need to look at that. Why, then, why is that like that? It throws up red flags right away. A budget is a working financial tool. Anything short of that, you're wasting your time doing it.
So.
Yep.
Your people coming in, uh, to, to do whatever, and I mean, the more knowledgeable she is, the less we'll have to deal with you.
You got it. That's the transition that we wanna see happen. I don't think you, you know, it, you may want, you may want to get rid of us, you know, after you get this under control. But most, most municipalities, nonprofits keep us around to do quarterlies, just to rubber stamp, everything looks good. Because things can go by the wayside really quick. It's just how much time you have to spend on it. In the beginning, you're gonna spend some time on it. You are. But in a year, two years, we're gonna, we're gonna address all their issues and hopefully make their lives a lot easier. The other thing too, the biggest problem is, when you let that stuff go, you got good people, I'm, you got good people on the street, right? So what happens to you guys? It doesn't get fixed. What do you do? I've kinda had it rough with this, I'm out. That's what happens to bookkeepers all the time. And if you're ever in the bookkeeping market, good luck with that. They don't exist. Solid, full-charge bookkeepers don't exist. They're very hard to find. And you pay, I used to pick them up in the beginning, thirty-five thousand. Now I pick them up for fifty-five, sixty, seventy-five thousand. It, it's just so much more money.
So, that being said.
Okay.
Can we get, would it be feasible for, for you to come in and do a review? You know, just to come in and say, whoa, we, this is a lot worse than you think it is?
We would do that anyhow. We would do that anyhow. Before we actually engage, because you'll sign an engagement letter with us, so you want us to do this. Uh, but we'll come in and do a little assessment and say, okay, this is where I think where you are. Um.
A minimal cost problem.
My, my, my father-in-law was, was a veteran in, in, in heritage. My, my, my father-in-law was, was a vet in area, in, in area, and Dr. Ripper, he passed away at seventeen. But I loved him to death, and he, he, he was a frustrated stalker, because he always loved to stalk them up there. So he's always worried about costs and stuff like that. And that's not a bad thing, that's a good thing, that's a good question.
And I can, I can see right now, there is no pro bono with you, that's pretty obvious, isn't it?
At least not.
I picked up on that right there. There's no pro bono, I mean, you know, if you, like, here, now, here's, here's the silver carrot that you got, is that you haven't had a guy like me for how many years?
Ever.
So if you look at that, how much money have you, not really, I don't like to use the word saved, because you don't know where that money is, but you haven't had to fork it out. So, you're going to fork it out now, and the goal is to get it under control. You know, you remember Midas, the old Midas commercial? Pay me now or pay me later? That's what it is. You're at the Midas commercial stage. You, you can pay us now, we can get this thing fixed, get it under control, oh, you can pay later. You know, where somebody gets ticked off, and they go to the state auditor's office, and they say, oh, they got to be investigated. Trust me, it's a pain in the rear, really. Don't tell me you got twelve cases, it says it.
I'm just telling you, I'm just telling you they won't.
Yeah, that's good, that's good, I hope that, but those are the risks that you run, you need to get it under control.
Mr. Carroll, do we have a current C P A that we use? I probably had a contract, somebody heard that, run out and done.
And I can tell you right now, this person, these auditors, they're going to embrace this challenge.
Oh, I know.
They're going to embrace it. Just because it's going to make their life easier. And I'm not talking about just the time that it takes for them to do it, I'm talking about their risk management issues. Where they don't cross the line and, and make it those financial statements, all become, suddenly become lurks. They can do a true audit.
I think this is exactly, because I've been stating from the very beginning, we can't base any, any decisions off fake numbers.
Yes, because we have to address the tax issue very shortly.
But we can't address that all, I understand that too, but we can't address it all, some information we've been receiving is saying that we've got four hundred and fifty thousand dollars once.
I would think we need to have the gentleman come in, and, you know, like you said, come in and look and sit with, you know, and we should go from there.
If I come in and spend three hours, I'm not going to sit here and tell you or stand here and tell you that I'm going to catch it all, and then, you know. Because I'm going to tell you, when you do this kind of, kind of work, every time you just, there's another stone, turn that over, oh crap, did I deal with that? Oh, you got a grant, oh my God, have you accounted for the grant? How, how'd you account for it in, in, in QuickBooks? The police department, I'm assuming is part of your books? Is that right? Because I haven't really seen your book.
Yes.
You know, so, I knew they'd agree.
Yep.
So we got to be careful of that?
Yes. Mayor and council, I'll make the motion, hire Luff and Associates, you know, to, to contract that with them, to fill the void that the management letter obviously talks about, that D K S is addressed now to different audits, and to assist in bringing our books up to date, you know, with a forensic background check on everything, you know, to get the town back online.
I mean, the statement was made before that, we were saying, we, and hoping that we get some of the Realty Transfer money to, to offset this. So we can make sure we pick up the trash.
Right.
That should more than cover it.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Yes.
Is that a second?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Matt, do you remember?
Uh, in the interest of clearing up the other situation we're dealing with, and this seems like it would help clear that situation up as well, I will vote yes.
I vote yes.
Mr. Rhian?
Yes.
Yes.
All in favor?
Yes.
One last word.
And then I'll promise you I'll be going.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I tell you, because I, I do a lot of speaking with people, it's pretty odd, and I, yeah. I call it to see if Bob would have, yeah, I have people in the audience going, uh huh, uh huh. And all they're saying is, hey, George, would you shut up, so I can go home and have dinner? That's what you, I get it. But, but one last thing, people think that when they get a certified audit from a C P A firm, they don't have any fraud. That's not true. Only six percent of fraud is ever detected in a C P A firm, in a, in a certified audit. Because that's not their job.
That's why you have other, other letters.
That's the other guy. Life forensic, when I go to, when I get to do a fraud examination, it's much more extensive, you know, so. All right, done, now, I'm out of here, I'll leave you alone, I promise. Okay, thank you very much for.
Are we meeting you here tomorrow morning, five o'clock? I'll be.
Now, we'll get, we'll, I'll get Jessica, we'll figure out the dates and times and all that stuff, and you can go to the heads up.
Five o'clock and.
You're not saying you got fraud?
Hey.
Oh, okay, good, good, good.
I'm just eager.
She's ready to jump in there.
Well, I don't, this doesn't make you sleep good at night, I, I know that.
My, my sleep monitor. My sleep monitor, actually, but.
Sleeping in the text of your worry box, you just don't like something like that on your watch, when it's your watch. All right, I'm out, I promise.
Thank you, Mr. Locke.
All right, thank you very much. You got myself? Need anything?
Rhian, tell me, and if you're wrecking, tell me, and we'll be reaching out to you.
All right, thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Some of it I'd like to do now, some of it I can do if she's got time to ask, or if it's fine. I just had a question, actually, I had questions for you too, about the process, because I wasn't here for that, like. I'm not like, it's been a couple of years, tax money, but I can knock out in like fifteen, twenty minutes, it shouldn't be, it's like real simple questions.
Well, we're going to, so anyway, that's, we're going to go back, I guess, Mr. Locke, I guess, Mr. Matt, he has some questions for, um, me.
I'm going to make this real fast, because I wasn't here for your interview process, I don't know how any of that went down. Again, I apologize, I had to work that night.
Understandable.
I, I, I got to fill in when I can. What was your official start date?
Uh, the second, and I wanted to correct that as well, on my report, it says the eighth, and it was the second.
Okay. And then you said you had, uh, this is, some of this is in regards to the memo. The bank accounts haven't been reconciled, is that all of them, or is that some of them, like which ones?
I have looked at three that have not been reconciled since twenty-twenty-three so far. One of them I've reconciled and brought up to date.
Which one was that?
That's municipal street aid, and that was because we have a bill that we were supposed to pay with municipal street aid, but the bank said there wasn't enough money to pay the bill. So, I got that reconciled, so we can get that, and so what's going to have to happen with that is, there's not enough money to pay it, and that's charity paving, so we're going to have to pay it, um, the shortfall is going to have to come out of the general fund, or somewhere else.
Okay.
And I'm working on finding somewhere to take it from.
Okay, and what were the other two?
Uh, the general account.
Okay.
And the old ARPA account that is now used for the K nine funds.
Okay. How long have you been working on QuickBooks?
Um, off and on for twenty-five years.
Okay. I, again, I apologize, I wasn't here, I'm, I'm sorry.
You have it done.
So you've already started working on the QuickBooks statements, reconciling the ones that you said you hadn't gotten done, yes, that's good, uh, that's done, that's done. Uh, the FOIA, you changed that on the town website?
I did, and we, we do have twenty days.
Okay.
For the statute to make that change, and it was the, I believe, on Monday.
Okay, and you, you've taken, you've taken the Delaware training classes for all of it?
Yes, and I have additional training on, I believe, October, yeah, October tenth.
Okay. The insurance thing with the app like, that was my next thing, that was just something that Mrs. Todd had already started, she just picked up and started running with us, we got that clarified. Was this job, you can answer this, anybody, was this, was this job posted online? Because I think it's in the charter, the way they post in the newspaper or something.
It's not, so we just got someone, the attorney, it's never posted for that, in, in the charter itself, with somebody leaving, in any circumstances, or with a sickness or time, or out of a point.
Okay. In the, okay. They gave you employee handbook?
I don't think I've got, I've been personally given one, but there is one in the office that I've brought you.
Well, you're supposed to get, make sure you get one, and make sure you get signed or whatever, I know that was like a thing for a while. This one isn't necessarily for you. Who wrote the, the contract, the sample contract?
Employment attorney.
The employment attorney, okay. Any reason in particular Janet was named in that contract, like specifically? Like I thought her name did.
I think you have a copy of the contract.
I do, yeah.
It's clear, like, the language in the contract is basically clear.
Yeah, yeah, but I didn't know why we brought her name up in that contract. Employment agreement, section one, term of employment, it's blank. Employees' term of employment is acting town manager for the town manager agreement, which will be from the date of employees' appointment as acting town manager. Your name would be inserted in this blank, until the conclusion of pending investigation into the conduct of current town manager Janet Todd, who is on pay suspension as of the signing of this agreement. I'm trying to figure out why we had to put her name in it when we didn't give her the courtesy of handling her stuff in public like she requested.
Well, Mr. Matt, we already discussed this when we were in executive session, while I was in public, I think that is a question you need to ask our attorney.
Yeah, I would also say, you didn't have me.
He has a second, I, I would like.
I gave you the number you read.
I appreciate that.
You don't have the current.
Yeah, I don't think that's. This was the sample.
Okay.
That's why I'm asking, like, the current contract, is it different from the sample, that was my next question.
I have to read them both.
Okay.
That.
So, and we've, we've already discussed, Mr. Matt, you want stuff up in public, you think that, um.
Yeah, but it just, it seemed odd.
I walked out when he happened to say, you're lying.
Because she asked that her stuff be done in public, so I recused myself, that's why.
Right, but they, after the attorney told you why we were not having it public.
And I still, still have a principle. And then the other thing in the memo, it said that you were going through documents and filing, sampling, destroy, what? Why are you destroying documents, or?
So, the only things that have been destroyed are duplicate documents. And I'm aware of the State of Delaware Department archives.
Okay.
On how to destroy.
I'm not, so if you, if you really explain that to me, I, I would appreciate it, because I, I don't know. I just saw that, and I'm like, what the heck, you know what I mean?
Yeah, no, that, the only thing that has been destroyed has been duplicate documents. Everything else has been filed, and any handwritten notes of the former town manager that I have found are in a folder with her name on it and her notes.
Okay.
So even those were not destroyed.
Okay, I just, I saw that, and it, it's, it's one of those things, before I got on council, I was real big on FOIA, I'm still real big on FOIA. Transparency, like the gentleman just said, you know?
I agree.
We need to know, so, that's all I got for it, I appreciate your time, I'm sorry. I wasn't here for that, I know it annoys some people, but it is what it is. With the current situation, the way it is, and things going on, I, I need to satisfy my own questions.
I understand.
So.
And since we're back on my report, I just would like to say that, um, some of the things that are listed in the auditors', um, suggestions, I have already begun to implement without seeing that, so, because, you know, like, there was a discussion that Carolyn and I had earlier today, and I said, I'm surprised the auditors haven't brought this up, but we're going to start doing it like this, so, then those changes are starting to go into place.
Would you mind explaining a little further, like, which changes those are, because they, they've given us some really good suggestions.
So, the separation of duties, generally, if I enter the bills, I should not be writing the checks to pay them, someone should be doing that. So, if I'm entering bills, Carolyn's paying them.
Okay, checking balance?
Yes.
Great, all right.
Um, also, the tracking of expenses, I have started adding accounts to the general ledger so that we can easily report on and track expenses and income.
Okay.
So, you know, this, um, trying to audit some of the, the grants is a little difficult.
Okay.
Or to reconcile them is, is a little difficult because of how transactions are just grouped together in QuickBooks, and, I mean, I would like to see them separated out. So it's easier to report on.
I, I, yeah, I imagine that would make it way more efficient.
Oh, yeah.
So, no, I, that, I told, I was going to try and make it quick, it was just, I had a big list, and I went through your memo, and I had some other questions that went with it, and I, I appreciate your time, thank you.
Uh, next we will move on to council members' comments.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I know we have that special budget thing scheduled for later on this month. I move that we do away with it for this month, due to all the information that we were just given, and what the, Rhian has found. So I move that we do away with this month, and we'll worry about it next month. Let all the work in progress, let them do their findings, and see what they come up with, and see if they can give her a little insight on where we're at. Maybe she can give us some kind of guidelines, some numbers, so we can go from there. If not, then we'll have to go, do it the old-fashioned way, the way we used to do it back in the day, as Dan said. But we'll sit here for two or three hours, and we'll, I don't want to do that, but.
Okay, do I have a second on that motion?
I would second that, because as, as we heard from the auditors and Mr. Locke, like, we, we need help, and we can't talk about a budget in the next two weeks if we don't know squat, so.
Mr. Nelson, you go?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson, yes, I guess that.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so we're going to cancel the twenty-seventh special, we, we can keep the October still there as of today. Is there a comment here, any comment?
No.
Should I ask them?
I actually do have some comments this evening, and it's, it's, literally, this is coincidence, so bear with me on my notes. Some people have asked me just on the street, hey, why did you get back on council? And it was actually, really, the conversation stemmed from something with Mayor Cessna when I was approached, because I was living my own life and doing my own thing, and I felt like I had served my time. And I asked a question, I said, how are the town, town finances? Unknown, unknown, it was the last time we did an audit, and they're working on twenty-twenty right now. And that is something that audits may not be exciting to citizens, I get that. But this is something, you know, I had a deep and abiding concern when that information was given to me. And I'm like, you know what, now I actually am a little interested in coming up. I've lived in this town since June two thousand and four, and everybody, talk of growth, Greenwood needs to grow. And Greenwood has grown, and will continue to grow. But if you don't have accurate audits that are up to date, it can't grow. It just doesn't happen. Audits are important, it shows the past, because it verifies our finances, but assists in us in planning in the future, as well as a council. And the biggest thing that I like about audits, it actually creates a shared language with constituents. Because the thing is, if there's a potpourri on Pennywell Street, and somebody bends their rim, and they're yelling at me about it, I often don't go down that street. I know with a good balance sheet every month, as Mr. Locke talked about, we used to get years, years ago, I'm sure we're sort of getting again, I know there's sixty-eight thousand dollars, I'm obviously using an arbitrary number, in the municipal street aid fund, so I can put that on the agenda, and we can all figure out, hey, do we, you know, does it need to be out? Is it something Roger can, you know, goes gravel in and fixes, things of that nature? Then it can actually be an effective council person. Is it exciting? No, but good governance is not exciting. That's the thing, it's not, it's actually kind of boring. But, what is it, it's ensuring infrastructure is maintained, growth can continue, abiding by town plans and ordinances, ordinances, that town can account for all its finances, and communication between the residents and council has an underlying base of understanding. So I put something together that I'd like to have put into the minutes, that I don't want to bore everybody with, but it literally covers all, pretty much any or all funding that a town like ours and other small Delaware towns live off of, with other examples of the major issues you can run into not having audits done. So, I'll submit this to you, and you can do your own research, and if you wonder why I'm such a nerd on this stuff, and not, I'm not an auditor, I trade. This is why, this is, this is what excites me about government. So, those are my two cents for tonight, give me a penny for change. Thank you. That's it.
Yeah. I, I know there are a lot of people out, out right now, citizens, constituents, wondering what's going on. Not a lot of answers have been given. Not a lot of answers have been given. I feel like we should be a lot more open with these people, we should tell them what's going on, we should inform them what's going on. Because things have been sent through the mail, and people talk in shadows, and hold little private meetings and things like that, and rumors get kicked around. And I don't know about the other four of you, but I don't know what to tell them. Like, I, I think at this point, we should just be blunt and honest about it as we can, and tell people what's going on. That's, that's my opinion at this point, because people are, people are freaking out a little bit. The whole tax situation's got people freaking out a bit. The town manager getting suspended's got people freaking out a bit. Uh, they don't know why, they've never been given clarification. Nobody, nobody knows anything, and the only thing you have is the echo chambers that are around each individual person. And it's like getting high off your own fart when you hear the same thing over and over again. So, I really think that we should go ahead and just address the elephant in the room. Mrs. Todd was suspended for an investigation at this point. That was on 13th to the 10th. We got 62 days of that 90-day clock to figure out what we got going on. I'm not gonna speak much more than that, other than we need to figure out what we're doing, we need to get our financials straight. We need to fix the situation involving that, and past that, man, like, we just need to try to talk to the people better, because these echo chambers rolling around town are, they're, mm.
What echo chamber on the Curio City Council, you guys say?
It's just, you, oh, what did she do? What's, it's just the rumor, you know?
So I'd like to comment to that, so.
I really appreciate that.
Well, all, all I want to say is, um, we as council are not to speak about what's going on from our borders. What I do want to let the town know is that, once everything has been finished and this whole trial is done, it will come. We'll get it, but unfortunately, right now, we cannot speak much about the situation that is, is unfolding. Except, that's in plain note, that Mrs. Todd is on her suspension, paid and spent, she being paid, she's spending, pending investigation. That is all I can tell you guys. I wish, believe me, I don't know how many times I've been trying to contact whoever, but I'm trying to make a statement to the towns, people understand. I've, I've come up with five, 10, 15 different statements, because I know the town wants to know what's going on. And I would love nothing more than to tell you what's going on. And be open, like I said from the very beginning. Unfortunately, the situation that we are in right now, I'm legally, I cannot speak about it. Now, when it's all over and done, then we can speak about it. Unfortunately, right now, the rumors do nothing but cause problems in the town. Why people are spreading rumors makes no sense to me, because if you enjoy the town of Greenwood, spreading rumors does nothing but hurt. So all I have to do is suggest people to stop doing that, stop thinking, stop spreading rumors, stop writing letters about truth. That's just, if you actually enjoy the town of Greenwood, you wouldn't be doing that. Because the town of Greenwood should be a face of community, a community that wants to bond together, not somebody who wants to spread rumors and try to separate everybody. Especially since they're just rumors and aren't true. That needs to stop. On the basis of community, I want to make sure everybody is aware, the 20th, we have Greenwood Day. Uh, we put it back together, uh, unfortunately, some people had left the town events committee, we have filed everything. Luckily, there are fantastic residents come up and step up and, um, help out finishing up Greenwood Day. It will be the 20th. I also want to let the public know, the town know that we have the streets closed, um, south of Governors. So from Addicks Avenue, south of Governors, south of Addicks to Mill Street will be closed. And then Mill Street from Governors to East, or East Market will be closed on that day as well.
That L, that, it's a L.
Yeah, it's a big L. So that will, that will be shut down, but we have, I think, 4,009 food vendors, we have 30 something other vendors, uh, free live bands. Please come out, enjoy it, you know, it's, it's, it's for the town, and it's what we need for a community to bond together as one, and not try to separate ourselves from rumors. Okay? And again, I want to make it known to the public that if I could say something and let everybody know what's really going on, I would. A hundred percent would. But unfortunately, I can't, because the predicament that I'm in, in us as other councils are in this problem, so. But I would make it known that when, when this is all done and over with this, it will, it will be nice, it will be safe.
I'll make a motion to your, say.
Just say it, okay.
All right, uh, we all favor your government?
Yes.
I motion to the.
Yes, 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 yes.
Yes.